Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 27th meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajian, Fr. Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sinayen.
Mayor Garbati.
Here.
Name and flag salute by Councilmember Devine.
Please stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Let us join in prayer for our city as we ask for guidance and wisdom for tonight's meeting. We pray for safe neighborhoods and prosperity and ask that we work together to make Glendale a wonderful place for everyone who lives and works here. We ask that you look after all those who serve in our military and pray that they return home safe. We ask all of this in your name, amen.
Amen. May we have your report, please?
The agenda for February 27, 2018, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Friday, February 23, 2018, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, and what's next?
Three would be presentation and appointments.
Thank you, Mayor Carpetian members.
...for meeting of... Sorry? Mr. Takalian.
Would you like to report for next week?
Yes, please.
Okay. Next week, there is only approval of minutes for the Glendale Housing Authority, but for the City Council, there is one item under consent. That's the fire chief's going to provide a report regarding donation for the purchase of fire station alerting dorm remotes. Under adoption of ordinances is an ordinance amending Chapter 1, Division 2, Section A, 105.2 of Volume IA, and Chapter 1, Division 2, Section R, 105.2 of Volume IB of the 2017 Glendale Building and Safety Code by deleting those sections in their entirety. Under action items, the fire chief will provide a report regarding a contract amendment with Young Blod and Associates for additional polygraph services, followed by another report regarding the Verdugo Fire Communication Center's appropriation for additional background services. At 8C is a report from the city attorney regarding the city manager employment contract. At 8D is the community services and Parks director regarding a long-term lease with Verdugo Woodlands Dad's Club. At 8E is the interim chief of police regarding the city's participation in taking back our community coalition to support the public safety legislative advocacy efforts. And finally, at 8F is a report from Director of Community Development regarding introduction of the right-to-lease ordinance. And under hearings, there's one item from Community Development, and that's an appeal of the Community Development Director's determination that the proposed demolition of an existing 1920s Craftsman-style single-family house located in 361 Myrtle Street will result in a substantial adverse change in historic resource as defined by the California Environmental Quality Act. That concludes next week's report.
Okay, and what's next, please?
Three V would be mayor's commendation recognition of the Shoshane Tea House renovation.
Okay, thank you. We have a few dear guests here tonight. Mr. Akira Chiba of Council General of Japan from Los Angeles is here. And I'm going to present few mayor's commendation to recognize the recent work that was done at our wonderful Shoshane Tea House at Brand Park. Recently, the Council General's Office of Japan in Los Angeles collaborated with Glendale staff to bring arborists to Glendale from Japan to complete renovations of our tea house. These teams worked together to improve existing features at the locations, as well as make additions to the park and educate each other on how best to maintain the grounds for years to come. And we do have a video that I would like to play right now, and then I will ask the council general to come up and say a few words before I presented the commendations.
Well, my name is Michael Belzer, and I'm the president of Friends of Shoshane. And we are a all-volunteer nonprofit organization that works here with the Shoshane Tea House in awesome Brand Park in Glendale. This week, we've had visitors from Japan, actually a delegation of gardeners, horticultural experts, and landscape architects come here to help us enhance and improve our garden. They've really expanded the waterfall, a bigger waterfall itself. They had a wall. Behind the tea house, they've added more rocks and more fountains. It's really an amazing amount of work that's been done in five days. It's been great because we've had the Japanese contingent, we've had the Glendale staff, they've worked together. A lot of the Glendale staff are Hispanic, they don't speak Japanese. Our Japanese friends don't speak English or Spanish, but they've been working together and having a great time, and it's really been an awesome experience. This is an oasis from the city. It's open to the public, the garden, Monday through Thursday from 10:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. Anybody can come and just enjoy and relax.
Thank you very much. Well, the tea house is a great, great... I don't want to say an addition because it's been there for a long time, but it's a great place for people to visit. Many people come to take pictures for their weddings. My wife and I, we attended a tea ceremony. Also, few of our council... Almost everybody attended the ceremony in different times. It's very relaxing. It's a great place to visit. And we were there one afternoon, and council general demonstrated his martial arts skills and put everybody in check, let me put it that way. It's a great place. And I also have commendations for few of our staff who worked really hard to make the place even a better place for people to come and enjoy. I want to read their names first before I bring the council general up, so at the end we'll present the commendations together and take a few photos. So from the city, there are Chris Peplo, Sergio Corral, Francisco Montano, Felipe Sanchez, Mike Parsegian, Antonio Montes, Ricardo Herrera, Hugo Barrios, Eric Nuno, and two local Japanese arborists, Kazuhiko Nakanishi and Matsuo Takahashi. So I hope I pronounced them right. So Council General Chiba, the floor is all yours. Please come up to the podium. Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, I thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to say a few words on behalf of the Japanese contingent and all those who are involved in the renovation of the Japanese garden in Glendale. My colleagues at the council general and I have been trying very hard to ask headquarters for the funding and to sending a team here to work with the garden, because over the 19 months that I've been posted here in Southern California, I have come to discover that community is the treasure of Southern California, and I am very happy that I was able to contribute to the community. If I may add just one word, the Japanese contingent on leaving Glendale said that it has been the most pleasurable cooperation that they had compared to all the other projects that they have undertaken abroad, in the way that the local community has been forthcoming and very cooperative, and the Japanese were able to tell all that they had to tell them so that the Japanese garden can be maintained locally hereafter. Thank you very much for the honor.
Thank you. And the commendation reads, "In recognition of your hard work and outstanding efforts in collaborating with the Japanese arborists to transfer the Shoshane Tea House into a beautiful monument, your efforts have helped beautify the Shoshane Tea House, making it a jewel for our community. On behalf of the city of Glendale, thank you for all of your contributions."
With that, I want to ask my colleagues to please come down, and all of us can take a picture with our staff, with the Japanese contingent. Like I tell you, Parks and Rec Department, they knocked it out of the park. They did a great job, awesome. Thank you, everyone, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Devine.
I just wanted to add my appreciation for the contingency that came, the council general, for working with us. I know that our staff enjoyed this work as a labor of love and enjoyed having all of your landscape staff here with us, so it was a pleasure for both sides, believe me. And I also wanted to let everybody know that in April, we are planning a cherry blossom festival. So you want to come and participate and take a look at the garden and the tea room. It's all so beautiful and so picturesque, so you'll want to come and see that. And there are plans to plant more cherry blossom trees in the park so that one day, when we have a cherry blossom festival, it will be all pink and beautiful. So thank you very much.
Okay, what's next, please?
Four would be consent items, including minutes to follow our routine and may be acted upon. By one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
Okay, is there a motion to move the consent?
And you have a revised motion at 8, Mr. Mayor, members of council?
Yes.
Did you want me to read this?
No, it just needs to be revised.
I'll move the consent calendar containing the revised motion at 4H.
A second?
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajian, yes?
Is that the consent items?
Oh.
The minutes are on that.
I thought we were talking about this. Yes.
If you want... Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinayen? Mayor Carpetian?
Yes, next item, please.
We'll be moving the agenda items out of order. We'll be taking...
Council comment first, then...
We can go ahead and do that. We can do the city council and staff comments first.
Council comments first, then we... Is there any comments?
I just have a brief comment. Last Thursday at the Glendale Central Library, I was invited to attend a forum sponsored by the CORO program fellowship, which was entitled Leading Locally. There were elected officials from the region far and wide in their political views. I think the gist of that was that the best work is done by the local elected officials who are able to decide what they think is best for their community before they reach the level of state government or federal government, at which time their party affiliation and the party machinery strongly influences what they believe is right and what they vote for. So the moderator was our very own city clerk, Arda Cess Kassakian, and it was well-attended. And again, thank you to the CORO program for sponsoring that forum.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Councilmember Najarian. Any comments?
No.
Okay. I have a few comments to make. First, I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of one of our own who passed away last week, George Comind, retired firefighter. I will read his bio at the end of the meeting, this one. Also, I would like to ask our city attorney to look into this issue of parked vehicles on the streets with advertisements on them. Some are appropriate, most are appropriate, some are inappropriate, and I want to ask you to maybe elaborate on that issue that we had, and it's an ongoing issue. And also, for upcoming budget studies that we're doing, like to talk about the public benefit portion of it, that we give incentives to people for their HVAC units if they want to replace their HVAC units and make it more efficient. We have programs for it. I would like to bring that up to be part of our budget study for upcoming weeks, and as well as the solar panels that we have. We have incentives for different programs that I want to really emphasize on the HVAC units, that if we can maybe incentivize it more for people to use more efficient units, and that's what uses most gas and electricity. With that, I want to ask the city attorney if he can maybe...
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of council?
...elaborate on that issue.
The issue which you are raising pertains to advertising vehicles or mobile advertising vehicles, vehicles that primary purpose is to advertise for businesses. So the city does have an ordinance that we adopted two or three years ago pertaining to mobile advertising. We are, in some regards, preempted by state law in terms of what we can regulate. We can obviously regulate signage that's not permanently fixed to vehicles. We've done that. There are a lot of vehicles are out there that just had signs posted to the vehicles. In addition, we can regulate vehicles where the primary purpose is advertising, and the gray areas where the vehicle can be used for other purposes, such as transporting people or equipment. So we continue to look at those issues. We're looking at additional regulations we might be able to adopt, and whether a vehicle that is parked for an extended period of time with no other purpose can be cited for this particular code section. So we anticipate finishing our review in the short term, and if there's an item to bring back to council for further legislation, we'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm going to ask Steve Zern to come up. He does have a...
Commercial announcement.
A commercial announcement to make. And on the public benefit charge, we will have a presentation for you as it relates to the budget for GWP and the public benefit charge. We typically do a two-year program. Even though the budget is adopted, as you know, on an annual basis, we try to have a work plan for two years at a time. You can highlight some things if you want right now, Steve, but we can have that discussion as part of budget as well.
Well, as luck would have it, this is the two-year period, so the entire budget will come before you anyway. So we do adopt it, and so every other year we talk about it. This is the upcoming year, we will talk about it in detail. I can answer any questions you have now, but we'll have it laid out for all of those programs you named, the solar incentives, the appliance and air conditioning incentives, the subsidies for low-income and seniors, and that.
Okay, thank you. It's not an agendaized item, I just wanted to bring it up, so...
Oh, it'll be in the budget. We'll have it ready to go.
When the budget comes, yeah. It's important for us to look at the amount, maybe we can increase the amount for...
Absolutely, that's your pleasure.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just want to make an announcement. On Saturday, March 24, we will be hosting the latest electric car guest drive. So Burbank Water and Power, Pasadena Water and Power, and Glendale Water and Power jointly go together on this, and each city hosts it. Last year was at the Rose Bowl, this year it'll be here in Glendale. And this is an opportunity for folks to come out and literally ask questions and get a short drive. We don't have the kind of space that we had hoped, so it'll be in our parking structure right here in the civic center, and we'll use the top floor, and you can drive the vehicles and ask questions. This is not a sales deal. These cars are being borrowed by a group of folks that will answer questions, allow you to sit in the car, drive it a little bit, and then refer you, if you're interested in asking more detailed questions and purchasing, to the particular dealership. So we'll have BMW, Tesla, Volkswagen, Chevrolet, Kia will all be here, and it's been a very successful event, and we encourage folks to come out. It's free, it's from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and you get a chance to see what an electric vehicle is all about, and maybe the team might be interested in buying it. So I'm going to leave a few flyers here, and then we have up there, as you can see, RSVP line at the dedicated website, which also has further information.
Thank you, Mr. Zern, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like... I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I thought... Sorry, Mr. Agajian.
No problem. The Department of Water and Power, as part of its process, is finalizing EIR for Grayson Power Plant. I hope that DWP will analyze a version that besides Unit 9, will include new 100-megawatt gas generation and 100-megawatt renewable energy option to be presented to council. Recently, there has been some major development in battery technologies, and I hope we will consider renewable generation locally or at the consumer level. And I hope the Department of Water and Power will consider this before they present their final...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Agajian. Okay, at this time, I'd like to move Item 9B and 9C to be considered at this time. I mean, 9B1 and 9C1.
9B?
If you can read it in the record?
9B, Director of Community Development, Regarding 314 East Harvard Street, Glendale Register Nomination, 9B1, Resolution to List 314 East Harvard Street on Glendale Register of Historic Resources, 9B2, Resolution to Not List 314 East Harvard Street on the Glendale Register of Historic Resources.
Okay. Who's going to present it? Mr. Platt?
Mr. Mayor, Jay Platt, historic preservation planner, will present that.
Okay.
While he's getting set up, the item before you is historic designation on Glendale's register. This is the old Kiefer and Irick mortuary, now occupied by the Assistance League. The property was built in the 20s by Alfred Priest, was the architect, who's a prominent architect in Glendale. It is one of the last remaining examples of this type of Tudor architecture. It is pretty very well-preserved. I think some of the... The only changes have been to the garage portion in the back of the property, which the Assistance League uses for their thrift store. I don't have any more tap dancing for you, Mr. Mayor. I can tell you that it is being considered under Category 3, which is related to its architecture. Now, Mr. Platt will show you pictures of it.
I will show you a pic, I don't have to, you know, pantomime or anything. So before the slides come up, I'll just start 314 East Harvard. Slides are here. Is the former Kiefer and Irick mortuary on Harvard, right near the library, and you probably know today as the Assistance League headquarters, which it's been since 2002. It's a really beautiful Tudor revival building, kind of like nothing else we have in the city. It was built in 1928 for Kiefer and Irick, and they remained in business in Glendale until 2002, when it was transferred to the Assistance League. The nomination is to place this on the Glendale Register. There's no Mills Act application associated with it, so this is strictly a Glendale Register nomination.
You said no Mills Act?
No Mills Act. A little tricky. So just a little bit of background history. Emil Kiefer and John Irick founded the business in 1922. They were originally in downtown Los Angeles and then moved to Glendale in 1928. Mr. Kiefer was involved from the beginning till his death in the 1970s, and then his son took over the business, so it was truly a family business for a long time. They commissioned Alfred Priest to do this building on Harvard. Priest is one of the major architects of early Glendale. He did the Security Trust Building at Broadway and Brand. He did the Pendroys Department Store that was then turned into the Famous, which is now the building where the famous bar is, to keep that name alive. Did the original Sealy's Building and lots of other projects. He did hundreds of buildings, and a lot of them were in Glendale. So when the Historic Preservation Commission reviewed this property, they felt that it was important not only for its architecture, which I'll give you some more details about in a second, but they also thought that because of the involvement with Alfred Priest, that he qualifies as a master architect under our ordinance, so the decision was made to include that in the designation. So here we have views from Harvard Street, and you see some really distinctive features of the Tudor Revival, the steeply pitched gables, the use of brick and stone, and then there are also some pretty unique features to this building, like the striped kind of arches at the entry door and the main window, and the tower with the little turret over it. And as you get up close to this building, it's really amazingly well-detailed. There's beautiful brickwork, beautiful stonework, nice stained glass work that you can see in these photos, and the building's also in remarkably original condition. Almost all of its original windows are in place, almost everything is as it was over the years, down to and including the paving on this driveway. On the right side, you see the driveway where the hearse's would enter and go to the Port Cachere and do their business there, but everything is very much as it was during the mortuary days and has been very well-maintained by the Assistance League, who've done a great job. They produced this nomination, and it's really one of the best nominations we've received over the years, prepared by Sean Bressel, and I know a lot of Assistance League people are here, so you'll probably hear from some of them at least about their work there. When earthquake issues came up, the building went through a seismic reinforcement program. In this lower-left picture, you can see kind of a metal bar that was put across here. It's very minimal compared to a lot of other seismic upgrades, and very neat and clean-looking compared to a lot of them for these unreinforced masonry buildings. So I think over the years, it's been handled very well. And then on the right, you see the garage where the hearse's were stored. This garage is now the thrift store for the Assistance League, and I think they did a very nice job reusing this building. Originally, there were just garage doors in these openings. Now they still have the roll-down metal doors, but it's the storefront for the thrift store, so it's kind of very thoughtful preservation work that's gone on there. There's an interior courtyard of the building, but because it's truly an exterior part of the building is included in the designation, as you know, designations only include exterior parts of the buildings and not the interiors, but this area has the same attention to detail that you see on the rest of the building. At the time of the seismic upgrade, some windows were infilled in this courtyard, and they used a contrasting brick, which again meets preservation standards to distinguish the different brick, but let the work be visible, but try to blend it in a little bit. I might not have gone with quite as red a brick there, but it still works pretty well. And here we have... There's one window replacement on the back of the building, and then the gates at the entrance... gates at the front entrance to the building were installed when the Assistance League came in, but unlike other situations like this, the league went to the effort, they reused some ornate ironwork that was inside the building, they took that out and placed it in the gates, so that even the gates have a historic connection to the building. So, when the Historic Preservation Commission reviewed this project, they felt it clearly met the criteria in three for the quality of the architecture, as well as for the association with Alfred Priest, and recommend that the council vote to designate the building.
Mr. Mayor, if you have any questions, staff's available to answer any questions.
I have a question. I think the graphic is wrong. It shows that Alfred Priest was deceased in 1903.
You have an extremely keen eye, and I am extremely forgetful. I caught that when I was reviewing this earlier, and then forgot to change it.
So, it wasn't some sort of posthumous?
Not a miracle.
Okay. I mean, it's a lovely building.
He was surrounded by death all the time, but his came later, so.
It is a lovely building, and the fact that it is seeking registration status, to me, is different than a Mills Act application. And I, there may be speakers, but I think by far, this is an excellent example of what we should be preserving and saving for generations to come in Glendale. It's a very unique building.
Councilmember Devine.
I agree with Councilmember Najarian.
I do have cards, but it's okay.
I do apologize. I don't know if there are questions, I think that's okay, yeah.
I withdraw those comments until I hear the public get in.
It's all right. I have two cards, Sean Burcell, followed by Margaret Hammond.
And did you open the hearing?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna open the public hearing and ask, maybe Ms. Hammond come up first. I was just testing Mr. Burcell, see if he's gonna yield to Ms. Hammond.
Honorable Mayor and councilmen and staff, I happen to belong to the group, the Assistance League, but it was 40 years ago when the Glendale Historical did a private inventory of the area, and I did, my area, as it was that I was assigned to do the inventory of historic buildings, was in that area. And I did try to get this building put on, but they wouldn't agree to it at that time, they were not interested. So, I'm really glad to see it, and I want to thank you very much. Hopefully, you're gonna pass it, because it's, one of our things is, this year, we have our 75th anniversary of Glendale Assistance League of Glendale, and so we need to know if we get that designation, that we can have it as part of our PR, our advertising, and our celebration. So, as I say, we're very grateful for your consideration, and hopefully, you will pass it, because it is a beautiful building, and the ladies have looked after it very well. I mean, everything is, has to be just perfect, I'm telling you. And, you know, as I've said before, we're a recycle group, too. We recycle things to sell, we recycle the building, using the building to sell from, and our ladies are all recycled, too, because they're, you know, they've had other careers, a lot of them are in their 90s, that work in the thrift shop and help to maintain the building, that they have responsibility for. So, thank you again for your consideration, I really appreciate it, and it's a great thing, glad to do it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sean Burcell?
Mayor Garpetian, members of council, I'm Sean Burcell, on behalf of the Glendale Historical Society, and since I got a hint of where council is going on this, I think I'll be really brief. This is a stunning building. You've seen the photos and heard Mr. Platt describe it, and it's incredibly intact. This building belongs on the Glendale Register, not only for its architecture, but as Mr. Platt pointed out, because it was designed by Alfred F. Priest, who was responsible for the look of downtown Glendale. He was primarily responsible for the look of downtown Glendale in the 1920s, a very, very important architect in Glendale's history. Finally, I just want to thank the Assistance League for their stewardship of this building. They have done a wonderful job with it, and I'm so happy that they agreed to put it up for nomination to the Glendale Register, and the Glendale Historical Society helped them with the nomination, and we're very pleased and proud to do that. So, I recommend highly approval of this nomination. Thank you.
I don't have any more cards, I'm gonna close the public hearing on this item, and Councilmember Najarian, you wanna?
I will repeat what you said. I won't repeat it, but I'll reinstate those remarks at this time.
All right. Councilmember Devine?
And I'll begin again that I agree with Councilmember Najarian. I think if there's any building in our city that should be preserved and on the registry, it is this building, it's a beautiful building. I think one of the most important things that Mr. Platt said was, that it was, the women have taken, have used a very thoughtful, very thoughtful way of preserving this building, and I want them to continue to do that, and I've recommended your thrift shop to everybody I know, so thank you for everything that you do in this, for this building, in this building, and I would definitely approve the recommendation.
Okay. Councilman Agajanian? Well, I agree with my colleagues as well. I think this is a perfect example of adaptive reuse for historic buildings, and you proved it already, so I'm wholeheartedly supporting this nomination as well, and with that, is there a motion to?
I'll move the item.
Second?
Roll call, please.
9B1. Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinayan? Mayor Garpetian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item would be 9C, Director of Community Development, Regarding 1601 Mountain Street, Glendale Register Nomination, 9C1, Resolution to List the Miradero Gateway and the Brand Family Cemetery, both located in Brand Park at 1601 West Mountain Street on Glendale Register of Historic Resources. 9C2, Resolution to Not List the Miradero Gateway and the Brand Family Cemetery on the Glendale Register of Historic Resources.
Mr. Platt?
Thank you. This is two nominations in one. It will require a separate vote, because these are two, two parts of Brand Park that are being nominated individually, just as components of the park. Obviously, the entire park wouldn't be included in this, and what we're looking at tonight is the nomination for the Gateway, the very famous Gateway that you enter Brand Park alongside, that was originally the gateway leading up to the Brand Mansion, that was built during Leslie Brand's life and to his wishes. And then we have the other side of the story of Mr. Brand, and another death-related moment tonight, we have the cemetery where Mr. Brand, Mrs. Brand, and many members of their family, including some of their pets, are buried and remain today. This is a city-sponsored nomination. Several years ago, the Historic Preservation Commission kind of embarked on a mission to designate city-owned properties, put them on the register. In the earlier days of the register, many city-owned properties were placed on the register, and then there was kind of a lull, and HPC felt like we should continue that mission for worthy properties. Since we celebrate privately-owned properties, we also wanted to celebrate our city-owned properties. This nomination was specifically prepared by a former Historic Preservation Commissioner, Arlene Vidor, on her own time, and she also worked with Bill Ahern in our Public Works Engineering Department. His work was limited to determining what the exact parcel that we're designating here is, and so he came up with some very, very complicated parcel descriptions, but that's an important part of the nomination. So, I'm not sure if the city attorney would like me to present these together, and then the votes could be made separately, or?
They're both written together, so you can present them together.
So, we'll start with the Gateway, but first, we'll introduce the Brands, who I don't think need much introduction to the council or to the people of Glendale. Leslie Brand and Mary Louise Brand built the Brand Mansion, that they called El Miradero, in 1903 or '04. Should have that in my head, but it's not there. An addition was made to the house that you can see on the right side in 1913, which is this kind of driveway, Port Cachere area, and then a master bedroom that was up in the tower. I mention that because the Gateway was built at the time that this addition was put on the house, so the Gateway's not original to the house, but it's original to this addition. The house itself, which is very strange for architecture in Glendale, I'd say for anywhere in the United States, it's very strange, it's based on the East Indian Pavilion, that was one of the key features at the Colombian Exposition in 1893 in Chicago, and you can see a lot of similarities when you look at them side by side, and I think that really kind of enhances the story here. And then when the Gateway was built, it took that kind of design element and brought it to the Gateway. On the left, you can see the original stone and metal gateway from when the original house was built, and you can see in the background that the tower doesn't exist over on the right side, and then this is the Gateway that we still have today. The difference today is that the cars don't drive through the gate anymore. When the Brands, after Mrs. Brand's death, the park was donated to the city, or the whole property was donated to the city to become the park, and then the Brand Library, and a new driveway was installed on either side, which I'll show you a slide of in a second, but these photos just show some of the details, the scalloped arches and these kind of minaret-type details, these cupola features that are carried over from the house to the Gateway. There's beautiful ironwork with the Brand insignia or monogram, whatever that would be. These, this ironwork is original to the structure, and it's in good condition today and is preserved. And then you can see here the driveways that were built alongside the gate, so it used to have walls coming right up to it, so it was truly a gateway and a wall. Now, it's a freestanding gateway, and a couple of years ago, actually 2011, the city wanted to secure the park, so these wrought iron gates were installed, and this work went to the Historic Preservation Commission to ensure that it was compatible with the design of the Gateway and didn't detract from its architectural character, and I think they did a good job there. So, that is the end of the Gateway presentation, and now we'll move on to Mr. Brand's death, and here he is, well, you don't see him, but he's in his casket in the Brand Mansion, and here he is in his beloved truck, the Tioga Wolf, that carried him from the house to his burial place behind the house, kind of up on the hill. And originally, it was kind of a simple stone plinth like this, and after his burial, his wife commissioned the pyramid grave marker to be built, with the name Brand engraved in it, a quote from a poem, and here you see her here at the cemetery in 1930, he died in 1925. She died in 1945 in a car crash, and by that point, obviously, the cemetery was kind of laid out close to its existing condition, and here we see it today. So, we still have the pyramid stone marker, we have some headstones down here, and then there are a bunch of headstones kind of at the base of the marker. The stone plinth is still in place, it's a little worse for wear, but this is the condition time has led to it being, and I don't think there's any recommendation at this point that this be changed. This is a city-owned property, it's maintained by Parks and Recreation, and they'll continue to maintain it over the years, and we have a few of the grave markers for Mrs. Brand, for Mr. Brand's sister-in-law, Helen Brand Dryden. The grave of Nathaniel Dryden is also here, he was the husband of Helen Dryden, he was the architect of the Brand Mansion, and also the architect of the House Art Even, so he's an interesting early architect in Glendale. We don't know much about his career besides these buildings, but definitely an architect of interest. He had obviously nothing to do with this cemetery, but he is buried there. I think that's the last slide for that.
Can you go back, like, right there? The top picture, is it a recent photo?
This is a recent photo, yes.
Okay, I brought this issue up a few months ago, the maintenance of, I know our Parks and Recs, they maintain the cemetery, but this is a recent photo, I want to reemphasize the importance of maintaining this site. I know it's tucked away, and we don't see it every day, but since it's being registered, and we are the ones that I'm really happy about, the body that is nominating this two properties, basically, I think maintaining the grave site is very important, so that's something I want to just reemphasize on.
Understand.
Any questions from staff?
Yes.
Councilman Agajanian?
How come the Gateway has not been considered as historic like years ago?
I can't actually answer that question. The Brand, this is, these are actually the, now they're, if you approve these two tonight, there will be five Glendale Register structures in the park. The Tea House that you heard about earlier tonight is on our register, the Doctor's House, the Brand Library, and Art Center itself, and now these two. I don't think when the Brand Library was considered, I'm not sure that anyone thought to do this. It's a very early designation, so we don't have a lot of information about what people were thinking back then, but never too late, I'd say.
Because that's a pretty structure, and I'm wondering why they didn't consider it earlier, because the building and other portion of it has been considered as historic, and that's just, these are left out, so.
Can't say why. Hopefully, it will be included after tonight's over.
I have a question.
Yes, I'm sorry. Councilmember?
Could we back that up, back it up a slide?
I've got it.
One more, one more, please.
To the Gateway?
Yeah.
Okay.
Regardless of the action we take tonight, I have a problem with banners being placed across that entranceway. You see what I'm talking about, like that blue banner? Is this something we can get the professional opinion of the HPC on and see what they think about it, seeing as I'm just a lay councilperson?
I mean, I think it detracts, we're talking about preserving it. It detracts the line of sight, it detracts the color, it detracts the.
Locks the view.
There's gotta be another place for that banner. I don't know how often banners are placed there, but we shouldn't have one there, I don't think.
They are actually often, I would say, just based on the fact that I go to that park often, and I don't disagree, actually, with you, Councilmember Najarian, and I think we could look at the possibility of having some sort of a display other than kind of in the middle of that gateway. We'll definitely look into it.
Does HPC want to get in on it, or the Historic Society?
I think it's more staff policy.
Does that make your life more difficult, Mr. Platt, if we do that, or would you rather have council?
I would love for council to make this.
I think this is our advertising.
Yeah, it's ours. It's not a permanent improvement, so I think.
No, no.
What I can say is, other historic buildings around the country, I think museums often have banners strung across them, and those are often designated buildings, so it's not unusual. It doesn't mean the building or the structure is less historic or less worthy of designation. It's more of an aesthetic choice, if the council would rather not have it there, I'm sure the Parks Department and libraries could talk about it, so.
We'll look at some options.
Well, that would be just my personal opinion, not speaking for the council, it's not a council action item, but I think, I think my point's been raised, so.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. If you don't have any more questions from staff, I'm gonna open the public hearing. I have two cards, Margaret Hammond, is she here, or she's?
She's left.
Sean Burcell?
Thank you, Mayor Garpetian and members of council. I'm Sean Burcell with the Glendale Historical Society, and I'm here to express our very strong support for both of these nominations. We commend the city for bringing them forward, and for, and to Arlene Vidor for her work on them. These definitely belong on the Glendale Register, and Councilmember Agajanian and I sort of have the same question, what took so long? It is, that gate is such an iconic structure in Glendale, that it really deserves the city's recognition and protection as a historic resource, so we support that, and we also support the cemetery, which is just a very, it's very interesting when you hike up there, and the first time I went up there, I didn't know it was up there, and you kind of discover this sitting on the top of the hill, and my first question was, well, what is this? And it is, it is a wonderful resting place for Mr. Brand and his family, and it too deserves to be protected, it is a. It is a, it's a very unusual resource, and, and Glendale should cherish it. So we urge your support for both of these. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Comments? Motion?
I have a.
Yes.
There was a slide that we were going, a slide that I received today, which I thought was interesting in this, there it is. This happens to be, well, it's Arlene Vidor on the right, but this is Nancy Downey. She is Leslie Brand's great-grandniece. She is 96 years old. She lives in Pasadena currently. And her archives were the source of much of this information. She lived on and off at the, at the home with Louise Brand after Mr. Brand died. So this is how we got, received a lot of the materials and the information that are included in these reports. So I wanted everyone to know that there's still a Brand. And I'm wondering if, if she's going to be buried there, but I don't have an answer to that. And I'm sure you, do you have?
I can't say for sure that she is, but there's one burial, one final burial expected at the cemetery.
Is that right?
And it's one of the family members, obviously, and it's quite possibly her plan, but I'm not positive about that.
Very interesting. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion? We're taking this one at a time, right? 9C1 and 9C2? Or can?
9C1.
9C1 would approve both. The motion is.
I'll move 9C1.
Both motions, okay.
I'll move 9C1.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinayan?
Mayor Garpetian?
Yes. Now we go back to item six, community events and announcements.
Correct. Six would be community event announcements, three minutes, and the three-minute general public comments, five cards.
Okay. I have first speaker Lieutenant Oscar Rodriguez, followed by Tigran Danielian, followed by Sean Bursell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, distinguished city staff. Thank you very much tonight. As you can see, I'm a very proud lieutenant with the Glendale Police Department, but I'm equally proud Rotarian. I'm part of the Rotary Club of Glendale, the Noon Club. So we're here to announce our upcoming car show, which is on May 6. And I brought some of our, my Rotary friends with me. I have Elizabeth Monastarian, Savada Hamalian. And we're going to tell you all about this wonderful event. So it's going to be on May 6 at Verdugo Park. I know I saw many of you last year at the, at our car show. It was across the street in the parking lot. This year, it's going to be actually in the park. So we're really looking forward to this event. It's going to be from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. We're going to have music fun. It's going to be a family affair. The Dad's Club is going to cook hamburgers. We're going to have all kinds of activities going on, but we're going to tell you more about it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Lieutenant. My name is Elizabeth Monastarian. I'm also with the Rotary Club of Glendale. Thank you for this opportunity to make our announcement. The beneficiaries this year's, this year will be Glendale Unified School District, the Healthy Families, and Glendale Police Foundation Teen and Police Partnership, and Glendale Police Teen Academy. So a lot of teens are going to be getting a lot of support from Rotary Club and the community. So since it's going to be a free event for all, please come out and support our event. The cars are, also have a registration fee, but we'll also have booths and a lot of games and a lot of fun for all the family to be there. So we would appreciate all of you being there and participating. Thanks for all the council member who've participated in the past. We look forward to seeing you this year as well. Thank you. And Savada Hamalian.
Thank you. One thing that we can direct people to do is get more information and check out the information from last year's show. It's at our website, glendalerotary.org, as well as the Cars for Cops website, which is carsforcops.com. And in addition to that, we are excited to announce that we have a lot of guest speakers lined up for the month of Fe, March. In fact, one of them was here tonight, being recognized. So Council, Council General of Japan, Kira Chiba, is going to be speaking on March 8. And I'd like to invite everyone who is available to join us for lunch that day. We do meet at the Embassy Suites at 12 on Thursdays. And as well as this Thursday, this upcoming Thursday, we have the Honorable Council General Emeritus of Ireland, Finn Barhill, who's going to be present and speaking about just different things happening in Ireland and especially Brexit. So that's pretty much it. We're excited to be continuing our community service. We're a 93-year-old club in Glendale. We have a lot of community activity planned for this year, and we want to keep extending our support to the community. And we'd like to see you guys be a part of it as, as we step forward. And in addition, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Beer on her appointment. Delighted to have you come out to our meeting as well as it becomes a tradition where the city manager comes and gives us a state-of-the-city presentation. So that's it. Thank you.
So last year, we had about 80 cars, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
What is the anticipation for this year?
How many were yours out of that 80?
Yeah.
Four, right?
Seventy-five.
Four, five.
Actually, we had about 80 pre-registered. We had about.
About 100 registered.
Hundred, hundred showed up that day. And so we're expecting to double that this year.
And there is no limit on the, the types of cars or the age of the cars?
As long as it's running and it could be on the streets to get to the park, that's fine.
How many years have you been doing? Is this your fourth?
No, this is our second year doing this event.
This is our second year doing the Cars.
For Cops.
It is?
We had the bike ride that we, we had that for five years.
And last year was the first car show?
Yes.
Well, it's great. It's great, and I hope everybody shows up. It's a lot of fun.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Tigran Danielian, followed by Sean Bursell, followed by Elias Kudis, if I'm not, am I correct?
Good evening, Mayor Garpetian and honorable council members. My name is Tigran Danielian, along with Roberta Arevin, and we are here on behalf of Unified Young Armenians. And we would like to invite you to our first annual Unified Young Armenians fundraiser gala aimed at raising fundraisers for the Armenian genocide commemorative events on April 23rd and April 24th.
Good evening. Well, our gala brings together some of the most influential regional leaders, and it is the perfect occasion to enjoy the company of friends and to meet new people who are unified and the duty, in their duty of securing justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Where is it being held?
It's, can you tell us about the event? The date of the event? I know we have a card, but date of the event, time, and the place?
The date of the event is on March 17 at the Ludovic Banquet Hall. I believe it is given on the card. And time, 8:00 p.m.
Okay. Thank you very much. Armenian society of Los Angeles, yes. Next speaker is Sean Bursell.
Good evening, Mayor Garpetian and members of council. My name is still Sean Bursell, and I'm still representing the Glendale Historical Society. I'm returning to the podium to follow up on my comments of two weeks ago regarding the illegal demolition of a house at 1420 Valley View Road. I will not address the specifics of the case, as it is now a matter within the criminal justice system. The Glendale Historical Society, however, did want to thank the City of Glendale, and in particular, the City Attorney's Office and the Planning Department for their swift and decisive action to address this situation. Two weeks ago, I noted what we tolerate, we encourage. Regardless of the outcome of this matter, simply by filing criminal charges, the city has said, "We will not tolerate illegal demolitions and flagrant violations of the directives of city council. This will discourage anyone from doing anything similar in the future." So again, thank you. And the Glendale Historical Society looks forward to participating in the discussion of whether the existing remedies for illegal demolition are sufficient to deter violations of the Glendale Municipal Code. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Elias Kudis, followed by Carol Rousha, followed by Bej Karpetian.
Sir Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Elias Kudis. I have been resident in Glendale for 49 years. I'm in what's called senior here in Glendale. Now, we have a land, we purchased a land, 32 acres nearby Brand Park, and that land has been with us for 35 years. City of Glendale install a water tank on the land and pipes to feed the other homes surrounding. And now it's time, we want to file subdivision, which I have here for that. We cannot file a subdivision until the water tank to be removed from our land. We don't want, we didn't get one penny for the water tank installation and the road get to it and the pipes from water tank to the homes. We didn't get any money for that. So we need the City of Glendale to remove this water tank in order to proceed with the subdivision.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We usually don't respond to the speakers on oral communication. Please leave your information with the city, city clerk's office, our city attorney's office, and the planning director will contact you, and city management's office will contact you and try to address your issue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
But Mr. Mayor, I would like, this is new to me. I would like some information on this 32 lot subdivision. I don't know if anyone else has heard, but offline.
Gentlemen said 32 acres, they said. Yeah, 32 lots. But I haven't heard about it, although this is the first time I'm hearing about it. Carol? Rousha?
Good even, good evening, Mayor Garpetian and city council. I'm here in behalf of the Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association to announce that there is going to be an important community meeting this coming Thursday at Brand Park. It's to clarify some misunderstandings about state law versus municipal law. And the City of Glendale is partnering with Northwest Glendale to discuss the impact of the state and local laws on congregate living, accessory dwelling units, and recreational marijuana. It'll be held at 7:00 p.m. at Brand Library, and we hope that the community will come if they're having any questions about these laws. Thank you.
Thank you. Quick question. Who is going to be presenting from the city?
That evening, we're going to have Phil Landsafame available. Tom Lorenz will be there. And I think that, is that it?
We'll, we'll have the planning staff that worked on the ADUs and also to give a brief overview on congregate care and listen to the concerns.
The police departments, there will be representatives from the police department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Bej Karpetian.
Good evening, Mayor Garpetian, council members, and new city manager, Yasmin Beer. Congratulations. I'm here on behalf of the Armenian-American Museum. We want to announce and invite the whole community, the whole city residents and the public to attend the community forum meeting we're going to have on Thursday, March 8. That is a week from this Thursday at the Adult Recreation Center, 201 East Colorado Street. It starts at 7:00 p.m. This will be our opportunity to receive feedback from the public on the concept design, on the proposal, the program of the museum. And we hope that we will have a lot of individuals there from our city. We are part of the processes, also meeting with other groups and making presentations. If anyone is interested in us attending their meetings, their organization, and making presentation about the museum, we would welcome the opportunity to be invited to make presentations. Thank you very much, and we hope to be back with additional announcements in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. This will be your third community meetings for the Armenian-American Museum?
This will be our third community meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that's my last card. What is next on the agenda, please?
Next on the agenda would be seven, adoption of ordinances, seven A ordinance authorizing the execution of the wireless communications facility lease agreement between the City of Glendale and the Los Angeles SMSA LLP DB Verizon Wireless.
Okay. This is a wireless site on GWP site. Do we need a report, or we are okay on this item to move forward?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinayan?
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item would be eight A action items, eight A fire chief regarding purchase of a, of an SCBA air compressor for Fire Station 21. Eight A one resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing the execution of a purchase order service authorization with Compressed Air Specialties Incorporated.
Okay, I'm just going to go straight to our chief, fire chief, Chief Fish. Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm coming before you and respectfully requesting the replacement of our self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBA air filler. So we have, currently, we wear bottles on our back when we go into burning buildings. And when we do that, we have to breathe clean air. And the compressor that fills that, those bottles, is old. It's, it was installed in 1993, and to be frank, the parts have literally fallen apart so many times, they don't even replace the parts anymore. It's become obsolete. So we are requesting $55,000, nothing to exceed $55,000 to replace that compressor system at Fire Station 21, which will give us, which will keep us in line with OSHA standards, local, state, and federal standards as we refill our air tanks for firefighting. If you would like me to answer any questions, I'd be more than happy to.
I'd just like you to, because when I, when I heard the air compressor, and I thought we can go to Home Depot and buy one of those air compressors, and why is it this expensive? Can you just explain a little bit to the public as to what kind of a air compressor is this, and the filtration systems that we have, and the necessities and the need of those, those filters for this compressor?
So if we went to Home Depot and you bought a one off the shelf, just a regular compressor, those, those are not generating clean air. The air that we put into our tanks are the, is the air that goes into our lungs. And so it has to be filtered through a multi-filtration system, which takes out the water. There's a water removal and an oil removal, and any contaminants have to be removed as well. If for some reason the contaminants are in there and we get audited, we get major fines from OSHA. We've never had that, and we never will. So that's why this, this type of a compressor is so important. It's specifically designed for breathing air and only breathing air. It's not designed to fill up your tires or to blow off the sidewalk or something like that.
Okay. Any questions? Councilmember Agajanian?
Can you explain exactly how you use that unit?
Sure, yes, sir. So we take our bottles off of our, off of our backpacks, which they come off of a strap, and we unscrew the, the valve, put the threads into the new hose on the new compressor, and you charge the bottle up to 4,500 PSI, pounds per square inch, and it fills up a 30-minute bottle, a 45-minute bottle, or a one-hour bottle, depending on, on the application that we use. Most of our bottles are 30 minutes or 45. And for specialty, like hazardous materials responses, we use one-hour bottles. And these, these bottles usually take about five minutes to fill. You can't hot fill them, otherwise the, you lose pressure. So it's got to be done kind of slowly over about a five-minute period. But again, it is a very specialized process. You can't just hook it up to any compressor. It's all designed and monitored and regulated by federal law.
This is regular air, it's not like more oxygen or anything?
No, it's straight air that you breathe right now, just like the air that you breathe in this council chamber.
Okay. Questions? Motion?
I'll move the item.
I second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinayan? Sinanian?
Mayor Garpetian.
Yes, next item, please.
Next item would be eight B Director of Library Arts and Culture regarding purchase of library materials and electronic resources, B one, resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing the execution of a purchase order service authorization with Khalifa Library Group.
Ms. Beers?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we're here to ask you to continue to get consortium rate from the Khalifa Library Group to enable us to purchase materials for the next five years at about $295,000 on an annual basis, which you approve through the budget process. So this evening, we're not asking for any new appropriation, we're just asking for you to allow us to work with the Khalifa Library Group, again, to purchase materials, whether online or actually materials that come to the library for usage by patrons. With that, we have Cindy Cleary here to answer any questions that you may have.
Now, with working with the Khalifa Library Group, we get a better rate and discounted rate.
Yes.
It's part of our budget that we have, it's a million-dollar budget for purchases. This is part of that million-dollar that it's already been appropriated.
That is.
There is no new money.
Absolutely accurate, yes.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Councilmember Agujanian?
How you pick up the books? Who decides what to buy?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have librarians who are professionally trained to do the selection based on community input and their professional knowledge of literature and nonfiction.
These are like one person, ten people?
We have four, I think four or five librarians at Central Library, and then we have librarians, probably one or two at each branch, not probably, we have one or two at each branch. And so it's a rather complex process, but, and then we have a department that actually handles the ordering and the processing of the books once they come in so that they can be ready for the shelves.
This organization Khalifa is, sounds like the king of Saudi Arabia.
I was thinking more like the rapper Khalifa.
That's Latifah.
No. It's Khalifa. Latifah. Never mind. I wish it was that exciting, but it's not.
So those four or five people will decide what the library are gonna get?
Correct.
There is no other?
Well, with input from the.
Review or somebody can override their decision?
Well, I could override the decision or, you know, council could always override the decision, but as I say, most of the decisions are based on community need and community input.
I'm sorry. City council can override what kind of books they buy?
Sure, that's always at your discretion.
I never got an idea that what you guys are buying. I never seen what library is buying. That's very interesting issue you've got.
Just based on, let me answer that question, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As it relates to purchase of materials for the library or any one of our departments, as you know, council sets the policy direction for the City of Glendale as a whole. And within the organization, as it relates to the operations, the library director in this case would have the discretion as it relates to the purchase of books and as it relates to the hiring of individuals who are professionally trained to understand what the community's needs are and what purchases should be made. So if the policy direction was for us to move in a certain direction as it relates to things that you've heard where there is interest within the community, certainly we would look at that. But you wouldn't be receiving a list as it relates to the purchases that we would be making for the library. That's operations and the city council works within the realm of the policy decision-making.
So I just want to make sure, because this is not, it's presented differently. I want to make sure that when you buy a book, if city decides this book is not proper for this library, we can stop that or not? I just want to make sure clearly that the city council, again, I'm not talking about myself, that we can stop to buy a book because we think it's not proper for Glendale kids or, you know, adults.
I guess I'd also have to talk about First Amendment rights at the end of the day as it relates to the purchase of books. Now, if the policy direction from the city council was to have the City of Glendale purchase books as it relates to certain subject matter areas, we would absolutely look at that. But I think if you're looking at a singular book, unless there's a major issue and legal would get involved, I wouldn't see the city council getting involved in the minutia of the selection of books for the library or any sorts of materials.
I just want to ask the city attorney where we stand with these books. We think a particular book is not proper for Glendale, let's say, then what's your rights or what you would say about it?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we'd have to look at it on a case-by-case basis to see and have to reiterate Ms. Beers' comment that council really should be setting policy in terms of what the community's interests are, what they're hearing in terms of what the community's interests are, and then it should be left to staff to make the selections within those policy guidelines. I think if the situation came up where there was a controversy, that would be something we would look at before having to bring to council to see if that can be addressed at administrative level.
And if I could add, we do have a pretty comprehensive collection development policy by which we are guided to purchase books. And on occasion, we do get complaints from the public about a particular item. And there is a process that we go through, I mean, it's a several-layer process that we go through for people to review, for our staff to review whether the book that's under question meets that criteria or not.
So I kind of know how you're thinking, Mr. Agujanian. As the governing body of the city, we should definitely have the authority to determine which books are bought. And I think that authority is there. But the problem is, once we get down to that level of, dare I say, micromanagement, we really get into a lot of problems. I know many other city councils across the country have gotten into trouble when they pick out a particular book and say, "We don't want this book." Same as school boards, that "We're gonna reject this book." As a school board, I'm sort of, sorry. However, I think we're certainly encouraged or able to make our own suggestions to the library staff as to what books we think are appropriate, what type of subjects we'd like them to sort of bulk up on, much as the way you would be a manager of a hedge fund, for instance. We need more tech stocks or we need more medical stocks. We could say, "We need more nonfiction," or "We need more historical," or "We need more Armenian history," or "We need more Middle East history, American history, et cetera." But I think it's a dangerous path to get into to say, "Well, city council, here's our list of books, give a check to which you would like or which you wouldn't like." So it's our power to do that, though. I mean, let me tell you that. But it's something that I think we're best advised to back away from, rather be more on the positive side. If there's a book or two that you think are appropriate for our library, definitely I think we should all be able to make that suggestion, even sponsor it ourselves. I know some libraries have a sponsorship page, "This book donated by, you know, Councilman Najarian or the city council." In fact, we could have those sort of books. So let's tread softly on the rejection side and on the encouragement side and the suggestion side. I think we should, if we want to weigh in on it, that's the side we should weigh in on.
And I just want to say, I think that possibly Councilman Agujanian is referring to, in the past, a book like Catcher in the Rye became very controversial. And do we want that in our libraries? Do we want that in our schools? And I think, listening to Cindy, we have a system in place that would safeguard against something like that. And if it became a community issue, then of course we would be in the conversation.
I just, I'm sorry. I just wanted to see the limit that this council can be, can get involved with this because the books are, in a way, can be very dangerous education system or education matter. I mean, I didn't know that we can get even involved, so I'm trying to make it clear that what our limits are. Thank you.
And I invite you to always take a look at our catalog because you can see every book that we purchase. In fact, on the website, it'll tell you recent purchases. And we're, as Councilman Najarian said, we're always open to suggestions.
Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agujanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian?
Yes, next item, please.
Next item would be item number C, Director of Community Development Regarding Amending Ordinances 5892, which adopted in 2017 Glendale Building and Safety Code relating to work exempt from permit for fences less than seven feet and retaining walls less than four feet from the bottom of the footing to the top of the wall and story poles. C1 would be ordinances for introduction.
Ms. Beers?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we're gonna go to Jan Baer, our building official, who knows this the best. So with that, Jan.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome.
Councilmembers, thank you. Jan Baer, City Building Official. Yeah, we're just requesting a ordinance that actually removes amendments, city amendments that we passed last year. It allows only changes to the building code and it will allow fence permits not to be required up to seven feet in height. City had an amendment that was down to 18 inches. City, or the State Building Standards Commission basically said, "You need to make different findings." We adopted them with administrative findings, they said you need to make other findings. We discussed the issue and we're recommending, actually, that we go back to what the state code says. If you have any questions.
Yeah, I just want to mention that I was, we were all briefed on this item and I asked the question, "Why is this here today?" And the reason is because our request was denied and we had to find other findings to continue the amendment that we made to the code for another year. And next year, we have to revisit it again. Am I correct?
Correct. The findings that we made were essentially administrative. The Building Standards Commission requires that those findings of adoption of code changes be made on topography, climate, or geology. And so when we had initially made the amendments to the building code several years ago, it was based on administrative reasons. We wanted to match the zoning code regulations. Pretty hard to make the findings of an 18-inch fence with three findings that they have.
Right. Okay. Any questions?
Yes.
Councilmember Agujanian?
I'm, myself, an engineer, so everybody's complaining that Glendale is very restrictive, puts too much emphasis on things which they shouldn't emphasize on it. And this is just recently was adopted in Glendale, right? In 2016?
Correct.
So why we were doing, I mean, putting another layer of restricting contractor homeowners to go through this? What was the idea? Why we went that far? That state should stop us now?
It wasn't that they stopped us based on what our policy was, it was the technical aspects that they wanted to say it doesn't quite match what the state requires. Again, we're not changing the zoning code requirements. The requirements for the different heights fences for the different yards still apply. We're just actually reducing layers now saying, "You don't need a building permit."
Okay. Any more questions, comments? Motion? Yes. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
Still moved.
Okay. Thank you. What is next, please?
Next item would be nine A hearings. Nine A would be fire chief regarding 2018 Annual Weed Abatement Program. Nine A one, motion to approve abatement order directing the agricultural commissioner, director of weights and measures to abate the nuisance on each declared parcel.
Okay. Ms. Beers?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as the city clerk read into the record, this is our annual weed abatement program and the fire chief is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions from the chief?
Do we need to check for our houses on this?
No? Is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
It's a hearing, Mr. Mayor?
I have no cards.
So you have no cards?
I have no cards on this item, so. And there's a motion. Is there a second?
This is just an intro of the.
It's an intro?
Correct.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Oh, this is an intro as well?
Correct.
Okay, my report doesn't say that, but, okay.
It's the way the report was.
Yeah, it's.
It's the way the report was written. Now, we had the introduction, correct? So this is the approval. I'm getting all these different looks from the chief, so it is the approval, chief. Okay. I apologize for that. It is the approval.
It's a public hearing, public hearing should be open, closed.
Right. So you're fine, Mr. Mayor, you were correct the first time.
Yeah, I have no cards, I'm not, I'm open publicly and I close it. And there's a motion, is there a second, please? There is no second?
Was there a motion?
There is a motion, yes. Councilmember Devine made a motion. Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agujanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Mayor Garpetian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item would be oral communications, five minutes. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. Mayor, I do have two cards here.
Okay. Thank you. Glenn Webb, followed by Andrew Ellis.
I'll take care, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I came tonight to submit, first, a California Public Records Act for information regarding the Grayson Repowering Project. And this is information that I will need to evaluate the suitability, financial viability, and overall effect of the project on my family, my friends, and other residents of Glendale. The information that I'm seeking falls into four areas. Reliability of the Grayson Plant and studies made of failure, reliability, failure rates, and generation capability of the units at Grayson. Number two, historical and projected financial information by GWP regarding Grayson. Three, historical and projected purchase and use of zero-carbon energy sources for Glendale. And four, historical and projected development of solar energy and battery storage resources in Glendale. As you may know, there are at least two plans in process for a zero-carbon Glendale, one being developed by me and one by another group. We have a small dilemma in developing these plans, and that is nearly a complete lack of real requirements. We have a lot, we have bits and pieces, such as the 350-megawatt peak loading requirement or the need to provide reliable power of one major source out. But what about the power needs of 80,000 residents of Glendale in the event of a natural disaster which takes out Southern California grid or damages Grayson? Or shuts down the gas-fired system to Grayson, the gas feed system to Grayson, which could happen easily in an earthquake? Fundamentally, the Grayson project was kicked off four or five years ago by postulating the answer, new gas turbines to replace the aging ones. Frankly, had I looked at the problem four or five years ago, I probably would have come up with the same answer. But things have changed drastically in the last five years. And the answers to this issue are not the same anymore. If the council decides to pursue the Grayson project, the very first thing that needs to be done on the study will be development of requirements for power supply to the city under all potential conditions. Emergency conditions, normal conditions, various load conditions, and various likely failure modes. I will spend my five minutes next week discussing operational conditions, reliability, and some of these requirements. And then in subsequent weeks, I'll be introducing my plan for a zero-carbon Glendale in five years at a cost of $500 million or less. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Andrew Ellis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Andrew Ellis and I'm a resident of Glendale for 27 years. What I'd like to do is I'd like to speak tonight in opposition of the Glendale-Grayson Repowering Project. And I'd like to speak a little bit about, I'm a conservation biologist and I would like to bring to the council's attention, the source of the natural gas that Grayson will be using is going to be coming from an operation where the extraction of hydrocarbons is done using the technique we refer to as hydraulic fracturing. And I wanted to just briefly talk to you about this. And then what I intend to do is contact each of you individually and make appointments to discuss this matter in a much more detailed manner. But briefly, the operations involving fracking can create a great deal of problems for the communities involved because of the amount of water that is being used in the fracking process. And I'll just share with you, in the United States, about 100 billion gallons of water is used in the process of hydraulically fracturing the rock formations to extract the hydrocarbons so that we can pump the natural gas down here to Grayson so that you can put it out into the atmosphere and heat the planet up so that we have to turn our air conditioners on. So the Grayson. So the Grayson Repowering Project does not make any financial sense. It does not make any sense from a climate standpoint. It makes, it's really, really dangerous to put these type of natural gas plants located in our communities where you have massive quantities of highly toxic materials, 10,000 gallons of acid stored onsite. So this Grayson Repowering Project is really a bad idea, but the most important aspects that can be tied to the Grayson Repowering Project are the extraction of the hydrocarbons in the Los Angeles basin and in the Bakersfield. And I'm just going to share a few things with you. The cancer risk involved in the injection of the chemicals that the oil companies use to extract the hydrocarbons, about 25% of the chemicals that are mixed in the fracking water that goes down into the rock formations cause cancer. These are intergenerational problems. And when you poison the aquifers in Bakersfield and West, in all of these areas up above Los Angeles, in the, it's a rock formation called the Monterey Shale, and in the basin of Los Angeles here, the oil companies are injecting massive quantities of cancer-causing chemicals into the rock formations that leak into the aquifers from which California draws its drinking water. So what I intend to do is, I intend to bring to your attention, I've been in the community collecting petitions and I have over 300 signatures, and I want to make appointments with each individual council member to explain why we are so concerned about the extraction of hydrocarbons and the repowering of Grayson Power Plant when we know it doesn't make any financial sense. We know it's bad for the health of the children that live around the Grayson Power Plant. We know that it will increase, not decrease, it will increase the carbon dioxide emissions from your power plant into the atmosphere, causing global warming that results in massive amounts of climate change. This type of activity must be stopped. We must transition California immediately to renewable energy and we must end the most dangerous aspects related to the extraction of hydrocarbons. Those are the hydraulic fracturing of our rock formations that threaten our drinking water supplies, the deep well injection of the billions of gallons of wastewater that is produced from the wells, those are deep well-injected back down into the rock formation. So we have to end that. We also have to end the use of this fracking wastewater to spray on our agricultural crops. This is absolutely crazy. You people are going to spend my tax money that I pay to you to give it to the Glendale Water and Power people so that they can buy natural gas that is fracked in, right up here in California, that is poisoning the aquifers and putting cancer-causing materials into the groundwater? And I cannot support this activity. Thank you so much for your time and I intend to contact each of you and appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for being here. Dan Brothman?
Hi, good evening once again. Mayor and Garbetti and council members, hope you're feeling better today. I wanted to spend a few minutes talking about batteries and this issue of lithium-ion battery technology in particular. And I'm going to refer to a letter that I wrote to council back in November, following some responses that Councilmember Najarian made on the subject. And I thought I would bring it back because he raised them again in February, so I thought it was, it was useful, it would be useful to talk about. So, so this is the issue with the environmental effects of lithium-ion batteries. And first point I want to make is, this is not just an issue with energy storage. The lithium-ion problem really involves all kinds of devices. So the phones that we have have batteries that use lithium-ion technology and many other products do as well. It's a big issue. It's not just an issue that Tesla is dealing with, with battery storage, but Apple's dealing with it, IBM, Samsung, and lots of other manufacturers. So that's point number one. Point number two is that the issue is really with some of the sourcing of some of the materials that go into batteries, okay? So we should understand specifically what it involves. The most serious issue, as Councilwoman Najarian said, is related to the cobalt used in producing these batteries. About 10% of that cobalt comes from what are called artisanal mines in the Congo where there is evidence of slave and child labor. And the health effects of this mining is also a problem for adult miners. Obviously, this is really bad. The good news is that companies like Apple, Tesla, and others know about this and they're working to clean up their supply chains. So for instance, Tesla recently announced that it will only use North American cobalt for its batteries. And Apple has pledged to end reliance on mining of cobalt altogether, meaning that they're only going to use recyclable, recycled or renewable materials. So this is important to understand. It's a problem. Everybody acknowledges it's a problem. It's a real problem. Don't want to candy coat it, but it's a problem that is being dealt with in the supply chain. So that's one thing. With lithium, lithium is also an issue not as, I guess, as serious an issue. It does impact the rights of indigenous people in northern Chile and Argentina where the lithium comes from. Having said that, we're not talking about major environmental destruction. And on a side note, those slide images that we saw that Councilmember Najarian put up of deep holes and stripped landscape, actually, those are not cobalt or lithium mines. Those are actually diamond and copper mines. We checked those out. So those images were not correct. Lithium comes from salt flats. It doesn't look like that. So that's just something. But a lot of people are using those images and this is what's, it's important to mention that there's a lot of context to this debate that people need to understand. The whole issue has gotten a lot of attention because of an active Koch Brothers campaign to attack support for federal electric vehicle subsidies. That's where all this is coming from. Okay, the images we saw, which again, were not lithium or cobalt mines, and the film comes from groups they fund. What they ignore is that cobalt is not only used in batteries, it's used in oil refining, it's used in the production of catalytic converters. And also what they miss is that extracting and burning fossil fuels and fracking, as Andrew talked about, does it vastly more environmental harm and damage to health than anything in the battery supply chain. So this is important to understand. On the one hand, we're talking about a supply chain issue, which is bad, but fixable. And on the other hand, we're talking about climate issues from burning fossil fuels, which are not fixable, at least not in our lifetimes. I have a few other things. I'll talk about them next time. But I just want to conclude to say that I understand Mayor Garbetti and you and Mr. Zern are going to be, I think, going up to the Bay Area to meet with the California, what's it called, the California Energy Storage Alliance people. And I'm just really glad that you're going. The folks we work with at Sierra Club know them well and think that they will give you a very good overview of the state of the market. And I hope next week, in your comments, you can tell us what you learned there. Thank you.
Unlike what was advertised out there or portrayed out there, this council, not just me, has done a lot of work on being responsible, on being environmentally conscious and sensitive to both Grayson and the health of our community. That's why we had, I'm sorry, you can go have a seat.
Okay.
That's why we had, since you mentioned my name and I'm not responding to, you know, anything, but that's why we had that health survey down. And Glendale is in top three with comparable cities health-wise. Life expectancy in Glendale is, I believe it was 93 to 98 years old. And that doesn't just come cheap. So this council is very responsible and we do everything we can to make the right decision for the residents of our city. Thank you. What is next?
Oh, so I just want to say... In my slide presentation to council three weeks ago, I realized that that spiral, that large spiral hole was not a cobalt mine. However, the videos taken of those children in Congo were a cobalt mine, confirmed by Amnesty International, who I believe do not have any ties to the Koch Brothers. I went to the State of California Energy Commission page on natural gas. California imports 90% of its natural gas from outside the state. We are not relying in a large extent to any fracking done in Bakersfield. That is energy.ca.gov titled Supply and Demand of Natural Gas in California. California continues to depend upon out-of-state imports for nearly 90% of its natural gas supply. So we're getting different information here. I'm getting mine from the California Energy Commission. I don't think it's the extent that the previous speaker had indicated. As far as those cobalt mines, the supply of cobalt is a complex supply chain. I don't think Apple or Tesla or anyone else is going to be able to part out those cobalt supplies from Congo when it gets consolidated in clearinghouses and spent on. Furthermore, we didn't even talk about the disposal of the lithium-ion batteries. There's a lot to discuss to, to just write this off as a Koch Brothers scheme to kill the electric car. I don't know. That's kind of out there. I mean, but I do stand by that video that was presented and I do stand by this California Energy Commission report that 90% of our natural gas is from outside of the state.
Okay, I have one more card. Lorraine Lundquist?
Hi, thank you. My name is Dr. Lorraine Lundquist. I'm a faculty associate at the Institute for Sustainability at Cal State University in Northridge, and I'm here to address the issue of the Grayson Repowering as well. I just wanted to mention a couple of issues. One is that, you know, we scientists used to think that natural gas would be a good bridge fuel from coal to our, what we all know we have to get to, which is zero-carbon emissions, renewable energy future. And as the data are coming in, more and more scientists are realizing how much of gas actually leaks into the atmosphere, both in extraction and in storage and in transmission through the pipelines. And scientists have discovered that if the leak rate is at an amount of 3% or more, then natural gas actually becomes worse as far as climate emissions than coal because the main part of natural gas is methane and methane is a far more potent molecule than carbon dioxide when it comes to carbon emissions. So if the leak rate is 3% or more, then gas power plants are actually worse than coal power plants. So determining what the leak rate is is very challenging, but the best numbers that we have right now suggest that it might be somewhere upwards of 3%, some, in some cases, around 4%. And certainly, as you know, in this area, we had a very, a very potent demonstration of that with the giant gas leak over in the Porter Ranch area not too far from here, which in fact was the largest climate disaster in U.S. history. So I just wanted the council to keep that in mind. And I also would like to address the issue of batteries versus fossil fuel plants that was just being discussed. It is something that is a bit of a misnomer, the idea that batteries could be worse than fossil fuels. Certainly, there are issues with the materials that are sourced for battery storage as well as the disposal of batteries. Certainly, a lot of issues that are challenging and need to be worked out, but study after study after study shows that when you look at the full life cycle of the battery from, of all the materials that need to be extracted to create the battery and as well as the disposal options of the battery, the impacts from batteries are far, far, far lower than the impacts from fossil fuels, which of course you have to, also have to do extraction and transmission. And there are many, of course, as you know, issues with the extraction and transmission of the fossil fuels and of course, the burning of the fossil fuels and the emissions from the burning of those fossil fuels. So I think the research on that is pretty clear. Thank you.
Thank you. That was my last card. What's next, please?
Adjournment?
Oh, before we adjourn, I would like to read the bio of George D. Demine. 57 of Barners Ferry, Idaho, a recently retired firefighter for the City of Glendale. Responded to his last alarm on Sunday, February 18, 2018, passing into God's glory from occupational stage four lung cancer. George, whose family called him by his middle name Doug, married his wife Kathy on October 18, 1986 in Valencia, California. He joined the City of Glendale Fire Department in March 1986. In addition to his firefighter duties, he spent much of his time and his career designing and fabricating parts to equip the firefighting apparatus, setting high standards for the department's equipment. He retired as a staff assistant from the department on December 3, 2013, and with his wife Kathy built their dream home in Barners Ferry. George once said that he was hesitant to accept Jesus Christ as his Lord and Savior because he thought that it would, that it meant he would have to give up too much. Eventually, he realized that he had everything to gain and turned his life over to God. He said it was the greatest decision he had ever made. During his firefighting career, George responded to countless calls, but the greatest call was from Jesus, the call from Him to come home, a call he was willing and eager to answer. George will be missed by all who knew him. We adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of George D. Demine. Thank you, everyone. Is there room to adjourn?
A second.
You adjourn.